Six oh three. Six oh two, call it six oh.
Okay, I want to welcome everyone to our December tenth, two thousand and eighteen City Council Workshop. The time now is six oh two. The first item on the agenda is the Visitors and Citizens Forum. We have one speaker's request card, Mr. James Plisca for the U-Haul. I'm sorry, that's not the visi- that's not- I'll make my mistake, sorry about that. So, is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak during the Visitors and Citizens Forum? Seeing none, moving right along. If you're looking at our agenda, it says review and discuss the visitor-
Brent Wees, but he's not here tonight. He was the one that had the discussion.
Yeah, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go on to review and discuss the plat approval process.
Put that, put that visitor system on the next one.
Okay. So-
Yeah, this, do we need to do a tabling or do we just-
Yeah, Brent, Brent isn't here and he's the one who asked it to be placed on here.
So he'll bring it to the next meeting, Jane.
Okay, so, so where we're at now is review and discuss the plats approval process. So who is going to introduce that?
Mayor, this is an item that, that Councilmember Watkins had requested to, to us talk about and I believe Wayne's got some information for the council on this.
Okay, Councilmember Watkins, this is something, okay, you wanna let council- Okay, okay, Wayne? You wanna lead off, sir?
Sure. Let me give the council and the audience some background on this. This is something that Councilmember Watkins has asked about the last couple of meetings and his concern, as I understand it, is that when we have developments that require plat approval, those developments currently go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, they review it, they make a recommendation to the City Council and then the, the plats come to the City Council for final approval. It's a two-step process, it, it takes more time obviously when you have to go to two boards rather than one board. State law, the plating statute specifically provides that all plats have to be approved by the municipality where the land is located. And it provides that the municipal authority responsible for approving plats is the Municipal Planning and Zoning Commission. But it also specifically provides that the City Council can require that plats be approved by the City Council in addition to the P and Z. And from my experience in representing cities, it's probably about fifty-fifty cities that require plats to go to both the P and Z and the City Council and those cities that only require those plats to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission. In some cities break it up, we, we have, through the plat, plating process, we have preliminary plats, we have amended plats, we have minor plats, we have final plats. And some cities break it up and have P and Z have final authority on some of those plats and the City Council have final authority on other plats. But, but the point of this is you have the ability to, to handle the approval of plats however you want to. Whether you just want your P and Z to review all plats and approve them or if you want to have some approval authority over those. Now, with that having been said, you know, one, one of the rationales to just having the P and Z hear plats and approve them is unlike zoning, which is discretionary. Zoning is where a property owner comes to you and asks for permission to use their property in a reasonable manner. And the City Council ultimately decides whether or not the proposed land use is something that's reasonable in the community. And it's a discretionary decision, it has to be reasonable, but you do have some discretion to say, I think that's good zoning or I think that's bad zoning, you can approve it or deny it. Plating, on the other hand, is what's known as a ministerial duty. If the plat comes before the city and it meets all the regulations, then it has to be approved. There's no discretion to say, oh, I don't like the development they're going to put on that property, I'm gonna turn the plat down. Plating is merely a, a recording, a recordation of land, property, when it's divided up. It's just a document that's filed in the, in the records of Tarrant County showing where the boundaries of the property are and details that go with that according to our subdivision regulations. But at the end of the day, if the plat meets all the requirements of the subdivision ordinance and our regulations, it has to be approved. There's no discretion there. So, we also have provisions in the plating statute that mandate that because plating is ministerial, since it has to be approved as a matter of law, that when a plat is submitted to the city for a review and approval, it has to be acted upon quickly. And the statute says that the Planning and Zoning Commission must review and approve the plat within thirty days. Otherwise, it's deemed approved by operation of law. If it goes to the City Council for a second approval, then once the P and Z makes its recommendation, then the City Council has thirty days to act on it. So, there is some timeframe involved there that makes sure that the process goes through fairly quickly and cities can't sit on a plat and delay it just because they're not happy with the development or just because the staff's too busy to deal with it. We have to, we have to deal with it if, if it's a plat. So in that regard, sometimes there's a, there's some thinking that it's good to have a checks and balance system in place. If the P and Z, for whatever reason, doesn't act on a plat within thirty days, then it's automatically approved. But if it still has to go to the City Council, if there's something wrong with the plat, then the City Council has the opportunity to catch it and fix it before it goes into effect and it can be filed. But, you know, as long as we stay on top of plats and we're, we're doing our due diligence and the P and Z has the plats put on their agenda and they act on them within thirty days, they should be able to take care of that if that's what the City Council wants, wants to have happen here. The other reason some cities like to have City Council approve plats is just it keeps council members informed of what development's going on in town. And, you know, when it comes to you, you, you get to see what's happening. And if it just goes to P and Z, obviously you, you can find out what's happening, but it, it's just easier for you to stay on top of things if all, all of the plats come to you and you can see what type of developments occurring in the city. Now, one thing that is confusing about plats and sometimes troubling for citizens is that there are a lot of plats that require public hearings. Any type of replat except for minor plats requires a public hearing, which means that anybody in the audience has a right to speak. And if they're not happy with the plat, they can, they can protest the plat. But again, plating approval is a ministerial duty. And so even though a public hearing is required, a lot of times we'll be in situations where I'll tell the council, you have to hold a public hearing on it and citizens may come up to the microphone and speak, they've got concerns about it. And at the end of the day, your staff's gonna tell you, it meets all the, the regulations of the city, you have to approve it. And, and sometimes your citizens aren't happy about that because it has to be approved. And it's not unusual for us to get questions from citizens saying, well, why do you have a public hearing if you're automatically gonna approve a plat? Yeah, and the, the answer to that is because that's what the legislature has done to us. They, they require a public hearing, but they also require you to approve the plat. The purpose of the public hearing, it allows citizens to raise issues that maybe staff missed. Maybe we didn't catch something and, and if that's the case, then we can look at it and say, oh yeah, that, that doesn't meet our regulations. Because you, you don't, you didn't meet X, Y, or Z. But it still comes down at the end of the day to whether or not the plat meets your subdivision regulations. And if it does, then it has to be approved. And that can be done by Planning and Zoning Commission or it can be done by both the Planning and Zoning Commission and the City Council. That's your option, whichever you prefer. So, you know, with that as background, I'll answer any questions and I'll let Bob weigh in on what his concerns are about that. But I, I got the impression it was mostly just a timing issue. Why are we delaying people who want to develop their property? If the P and Z and the City Council both have to approve the plat, why not just let it go to P and Z and let them approve the plat?
Councilmember Watkins, did you have something you wanted to add to that?
Yeah, yeah, he pretty much addressed it. There was the, the, the time involved. Excuse me, I, you know, I've had some conversation about it over the years, but I, I thought, well, that's the way it is, that's the way it is. And I thought that some of the builders or some of the people were wanting, uh, just kind of sour grapes because they couldn't do it fast enough. Then I had someone, staff, bring it up at a planning and zoning meeting where I was liaison. I said, really, this is a, it's not a Texas law, it's something that we do here. And then not too long after that, I saw a person that's done a lot of development in Alton City. Said, you know, I'm, sometimes I'm out thirty to sixty days whenever, I wouldn't, wouldn't, maybe not even be out, but two weeks if, you know, if it's handled right. And it just seemed like to be more business friendly, also staff time and paperwork and this, that, and the other, it just seemed like the thing to do. So I'd like, I'd like to see it put on the agenda to, as an action item.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Grow.
Have we had issues with P and Z not getting to a plat within thirty days? No, so that's, okay, so that's one issue that we, we haven't had. And would it be an, an ordinance that we, would that be an ordinance that we would have to change? Is there, is there an ordinance that regulates us to have a plat or?
Yeah, it's, it's your subdivision ordinance and we would need to bring to you an amendment to the subdivision regulations. And there's some other questions we need to talk about tonight if you want to go in that direction. Because the ordinance I bring you, I need some direction on. There's, in addition to the council just approving the plat, your subdivision ordinance also requires the council to weigh in on variances and other issues. If, if a developer-
Would that be like a variance? Okay, but aren't those two different things, a variance would be a-
They, they can be, absolutely. And so that's a question, whether the council still wants to hear variances or do you want the P and Z to, to grant variances?
I would say the council would have to do the variances and the, and because that's not an administrative thing or magic, what, what'd you call it?
Yeah, a ministerial duty.
Ministerial duty. That's not a ministerial duty because if the state legislature says, hey, if they, if no action happens, it's done. That means it's, that's, that's on autopilot and it's a fire and forget and, and it happens. But the variances, where I could see where, if there are citizens that want to come and talk about, hey, I don't want this thing two hundred feet away from my fence, then I, then I could see the council getting involved in that. But, you know, if it's something that, it's part of the state legislature and it's done and we're adding thirty days onto something that could have been, you know, we're at, it's going to sixty days and we can get it done in thirty days? You know, as they say in business, time is money.
Well, I'm a big advocate, I've, it's come up in the last couple of meetings. I'm a big advocate in the citizens getting to say whatever they want to say as long as they don't attack us. But, uh, I also, I also see a problem with putting something out there, as, as Wayne said. You say what you want to do, the citizen gets up and then complains about it. The staff gets up and says, well, it meets all the requirements. You tell the citizen to go sit down and we don't care what you think. I, you know, it's just a, you're setting something out there that, that looked like to me it would be a-
Well, okay.
I, I want my question, I think, I don't remember whether I mentioned it to Wayne or not, if there was some kind of provision, it wouldn't say that we never looked at a plat. It would just say, because if you got, if, if there is some kind of difficulty or whatever or-
I would just say all plats are done at P and Z and then if, because they'll have the public hearing for the replat. So their public hearing's gonna be met and so people can sound off about the plat. But then ultimately the plat's gonna get approved if meet, if all the specifications meet the requirements.
Yeah, that's where I'm at.
And so, so having come before a council just so they add thirty days so people can regurgitate the same things that they said at P and Z, then, you know, we're just adding thirty days for something that's gonna be fait accompli anyway. So, but I imagine the variances would be later down the development cycle and that wouldn't have to be addressed. As, like I said, I feel that that would be a council thing. But that's later down the development cycle of whatever structure that they're trying to build. Because, kind of like when Fuel City came before the council for its variances because they have livestock, you know, close to residential. And so that's where neighbors can come by and say, hey, I don't want livestock or, yeah, I'd love to have it, so.
And, and to clarify, you know, what I was speaking of a while ago would be when an applicant requests a variance to the subdivision regulations themselves. I mean, they're, they may need a, a variance to another city ordinance or the zoning ordinance or something, we have a process for that. But whenever a developer is seeking a variance or a waiver or a modification of the subdivision regulations, you can let Planning and Zoning Commission deal with those or you can have those come to the City Council for review and approval.
Okay, that would mean that they didn't meet the requirements then?
That's right.
So then, okay, so that's outside of the specification, so, so that if, then I could see that maybe come before council. Because that would mean that we would be able to disapprove it and send it back and say, hey, you, you're not meeting the specifications and you have to adjust your plan. Now, if, if that was the case, does that mean that it, it's still approved if we say no? Even if they don't meet the specifications that are, that, I guess are regulations for?
What, you would, you would approve the plat subject to your subdivision regulations and-
Okay, but if it doesn't meet the regulations and we say no, then they would have to, they, they would have to adjust, the plat is not, cannot be filed?
That's right.
Okay, so then-
Cannot be filed then.
So then, okay, that, that would, that seems like a fairly easy thing. So like if it doesn't meet the specifications, it has to go before council. If it meets the specifications, it's done at P and Z.
Thank you, Councilmember Grow. Uh, Councilmember Thompson?
Okay. Mr. Olson, in anything that you have ever done regarding plats, would there be any exceptions? Maybe like for the amended or the replats? That you have ever experienced that we would need to consider exactly what Walter was talking about?
That's a broad question, but, uh, yeah, I, I have seen situations where even though a plat comes to the City Council and it has to be approved. I've seen situations where the council can still negotiate with a developer. You can raise the issues about what we have a concern about and why we think it would not be beneficial to the neighboring properties and the like. And sometimes a developer will say, well, let, let me just offer to do something. You can't make them do it, but sometimes you can talk to them about problems that they may be creating and, and give them the ability to try to fix those in some other manner. Although at the end of the day, if they say, well, no, that's the way I want to do it, my advice to you is gonna be you have to approve it. But typically, with replats and amended plats, typically those are things I think the Planning and Zoning Commission can handle. That's, that's what they do, that's what they're trained to do. And I think they're capable of, of taking the staff reports who thoroughly review all those plats and make recommendations. And if there's something that's missing, all the way down to, you know, the, the north arrow's not on the plat, then it's made clear that the north arrow has to be put on the plat before it can be filed. As long as we take care of all those, those details, I think it can be handled by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Having said that, I have some city councils that just prefer to hear plats and, and vote on them. They like, they like to have that ability to have one last stop in front of them. And it, it's just a matter of preference. And I've touched base with, with Glenna and, and the city staff about this a little bit, but, you know, I don't know if Glenna's got any comments she wants to make now or she wants to make comments if we bring an ordinance back to you. But I'll certainly work with her in drafting the ordinance that we bring to you and make a recommendation. If, if you want to consider removing council approval of regular plats, you know, I'll, I'll work with staff on what we would recommend to you in that regard.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Thompson. Uh, Dr. Tron?
Man, council, so far, what I heard, it got confused. My question here, are we having a current ordinance talking about plat or pre-plat approval process here in our city? But if not, can we do one, make sure everybody on the same page? And, you know, not, because I heard Ms. Councilman Watkins said, but the main thing, so far everything done, I didn't see any problem. But if there is any change, do we need to have a new ordinance or we need to have something done on the paper so everybody will have same page? Thank you.
Yes, you will need a new ordinance. And I would recommend that the proposed ordinance go to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their, their recommendation on whether they think this is a good idea or a bad idea for, for you to change what you're currently doing. And so my suggestion would be if, if the council's in favor of moving forward to looking at this, that we draft an ordinance, take it to the Planning and Zoning Commission, get their feedback on it, bring it to you as soon as the timing will allow for your consideration. And we can talk further about it then and at that point in time, you may like it, you may not like it. But, okay, at least give it a shot.
Thank you, Dr. Tron. Uh, Councilmember None?
Thank you. Um, well, I'm, I'm in favor of what you just said. I do have pros and cons about the concept, getting out of the hands of City Council. I'm one that likes to kind of know what's going on, that helps me, you know, know what's going on in the city. I can also understand, you know, we have good people in P and Z and we have excellent staff also to guide us in the right direction. So I'm willing, I also believe, I, I, I think variances should be brought before the council too. But with what you just said, Mr. Olson, I think that's a good idea, just to bring it to us and we can look at it. I can read it, I can look at it, I am a visual person and I think that would help a lot. So, that, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. So, are, is everyone in agreement that at least bring back an ordinance? Is that what you're saying, Wayne? Or you'll get with Glenna and then y'all, I guess y'all will run it past the P and Z and then bring back some type of ordinance for a review?
Bring it back to you, we'll talk about it again, we'll talk about it further. And if, if you like it, then you can approve it. If not, then we try, but you just say no.
Fair enough, everyone? Okay, well, good enough. Moving on to ex, well, let's see, the time now is six twenty-five. We're now convening to executive session pursuant to five fifty-one oh seven one and oh seven two of the Texas Government Code at six twenty-five.
Is this new with the little portraits up there?
Maybe, I don't know.
I like that, yeah.
I think, I think it helps you know who people are, Wayne.
Yeah, I, I can't keep the names straight.
But if not, can we do one, make sure everybody on the same page? And, you know, not, because I heard Ms. Councilman Watkins said, but the main thing, so far, everything done, I didn't see any problem. But if there is any change, do we need to have a new ordinance, or we need to have something done on the paper so everybody will have same page? Thank you.
Yes, you will need a new ordinance, and I would recommend that the proposed ordinance go to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their recommendation on whether they think this is a good idea or a bad idea for you to change what you're currently doing. And so my suggestion would be if the council's in favor of moving forward to looking at this, that we draft an ordinance, take it to the Planning and Zoning Commission, get their feedback on it, bring it to you as soon as the timing will allow for your consideration, and we can talk further about it then, and at that point in time, you may like it, you may not like it, but at least give it a shot.
Thank you, Dr. Tron. Councilmember None.
Thank you. Well, I'm in favor of what you just said. I do have pros and cons about the concept getting out of the hands of city council. I'm one that likes to kind of know what's going on, that helps me, you know, know what's going on in the city. I can also understand, you know, we have good people in P and Z, and we have excellent staff also to guide us in the right direction. So I'm willing, I also believe, I think variances should be brought before the council, too. But with what you just said, Mr. Olson, I think that's a good idea, just to bring it to us, and we can look at it. I can read it, I can look at it, and I am a visual person, and I think that would help a lot. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. So is everyone in agreement that at least bring back an ordinance? Is that what you're saying, Wayne? Or you'll get with Glenna, and then, I guess y'all will run it past the P and Z, and then bring back some type of ordinance for review?
We'll talk about it again, we'll talk about it further, and if you like it, then you can approve it, if not, then we try, but you just say no.
Fair enough, everyone? Okay, well, good enough. Moving on to, well, let's see, the time now is 6:25. We're now convening to executive session pursuant to 551-071 and 072 of the Texas Government Code at 6:25.
Is this new with the little portraits up there?
Maybe. I don't know.
I like that, yeah.
I think it helps you know who people are, Wayne.
Yeah, I can't keep the names straight.
First item on the agenda is the invocation of a pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Ricky Brown. Would you please stand?
May we bow our heads as we pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for being in our lives and guiding us. Thank you for the privilege to be able to gather and govern in a free and democratic society. We give thanks to the women and men who continue to fight for this freedom every day. Father, please watch over every employee of this city as they go about their daily routines to make Haltum City the city that it is. This is kind of hard for me. Father, we ask that you guide and be with the family of Haltum City Water Production Supervisor Roy Hoard during their time of grief with the passing of Roy, especially his wife Crystal and daughters Zoe and Reese. Lastly, Father, guide this council as we work together and build a community that we can all be proud of. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love. Amen.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Moving right along to the announcements and events, our City Secretary Art Camacho.
Thank you, Mayor. The announcements for December 10th, 2018. Community projects, the Neighborhood Decorating Contest begins today and will run through the 16th. So be sure to have your homes decorated for the holidays. Eighteen residential winners across the city will be selected, as well as one business in our new business category. Thanks to the community for keeping this fun holiday tradition going. The Veterans Memorial Committee has kicked off a brick fundraiser to help raise funds for Phase Two, which includes a Walk of Freedom that will be paid with the engraved bricks purchased through the fundraiser. To order your brick and be a part of this very special project, please visit or stop by the rec center to fill out an order form. Four by eight bricks are forty dollars and eight by eight bricks are one hundred dollars. Haltum City counters are now available at City Hall, the Recreation Center, and the library. The Parks and Recreation Department is hosting a public input meeting regarding the new ten-year parks and open space master plan on Wednesday, December 12th at 7:00 PM at the rec center. If you would like to provide any feedback regarding our park system, please show and share. On Christmas Day, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, the Christmas Center of Fort Worth would like to invite you to a free luncheon. The day begins with Santa and Mrs. Claus arriving on a holiday, a Haltum City Fire Engine. And once seated in Santa land, Santa and Mrs. Claus will give each child a free gift according to the gender and age. They will also offer free groceries and send out hot meals to those who are homebound. If you would like to help, please drop off ten-dollar toys and gifts for boys and girls ages ten to six, or excuse me, zero to sixteen. And the Christian Center of Fort Worth is located at 4301 Northeast 28th Street, and they can be reached at 817-834-5595, or www.ccofw.org. The rec center will be closed on Monday, December 24th, and Tuesday, December 5th, and will close at 6:00 PM on Monday, December 31st, and will be closed all day on Tuesday, January 1st, 2018, along with the other City Hall facilities on that same closing. In the public library, the teen programs, family movie night, and super science Saturdays, adult GED, ESL classes, and other library activities are all listed on the library's website for the dates and times. The holiday bedtime storytime is Thursday, December 20th at 6:30 PM. So bring your camera for pictures with Santa and Mrs. Claus, and the merry makers will be performing, and there will be crafts, stories, and refreshments. Paint Night at the library was beheld Saturday, January 12th at 5:30 PM at the library, where you can create and then leave with an awesome piece of art for your home. No experience is necessary, and all supplies are provided. Registration is required, so you can call the library at 817-222-7786. And as was decided at the last council meeting, there will be no council meeting two weeks from now on December 24th. And that's our announcements, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Camacho. Next on the agenda is presentations, Bobby Arthur. This is certificate of recognition to Warren Davenport presented by Bobby Arthur.
It's a rare occasion when Haltum City has the opportunity to honor a citizen for such an outstanding and tenured service, and Haltum City has such a citizen in Warren Davenport, who began his service with Haltum City, May 4th, 1968, in a runoff election, serving on and off the council over twenty years, whereas Warren also served on various boards and commissions over the next thirty years, being established with the Fire Services Board since 2003, instrumental in securing donations for the bronze fireman statue at Station One. And whereas in addition to his community service, Warren was also an Air Force veteran, a member of the American Legion, Moose Lodge, Odd Fellows, volunteer fireman, member of the Asbury United Methodist Church for fifty-eight years, and several motorcycle clubs and square dance clubs. Whereas besides being a father, a grandfather, and great-grandfather, Warren and Pat, his wife of over sixty-five years, were honored as hometown heroes in 2012 by the Northeast Chamber, and he has achieved numerous accolades in regard to his employment and associations. Now therefore I, David Abern, Mayor of the City of Haltum City, Texas, and on behalf of the entire City Council and all citizens, wish to publicly recognize, thank you, honor you, for your commitment and service to the Haltum City community.
Well, thank you. May I say a word?
I would just like to say a couple of words. I'm not a public speaker. But I sit on that council, and I want to thank every one of you for doing a job well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport.
Thank you.
Moving right along to our consent agenda. This consists of agenda items number one, two, three, four, five, and six. Again, our consent agenda consisting of items number one, two, three, four, five, and six. Were there any questions or comments from the council regarding our consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, we are in line for a motion. Councilmember Brown?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve everything on the consent agenda.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion for approval of the entire consent agenda. Councilmember, none.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll second that.
Thank you, ma'am. So we have a motion for approval and a second. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, if you would, please signify your votes. Motion passes unanimous. Thank you, council. Now we're moving on to our regular agenda. Considerate item number seven, revision of the personnel policies and procedures. Ms. Beckett, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm here to talk about three policy revisions. There are not very substantial revisions. We are moving the payday for biweekly employees from Thursday to Friday, and that is because there is a very limited amount of time to process the payroll between the time it gets turned in on Monday afternoon or Tuesday, and payday on Thursday, which results in a lot of rushing. And so we want to move the payday to Friday so that we're not having to estimate pay during holiday weeks. This became especially apparent this year because Christmas Eve were closed and Christmas Day were closed, and then that is a pay week, so we'd have less than twelve hours to process the payroll. So we want to move the payday to Friday for biweekly employees. For the other changes that are in the policies that you have, we're changing the fire department. They had been on a fifteen-day work period, and a couple of years ago, they did a trial of a 4896 schedule where they worked a twenty-four-day work period, and so we're changing the policies to get everything in line for them. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any questions or comments from the council for Ms. Beckett? Councilmember, none.
Thank you, Mayor. We discussed this a little bit in executive session with Chief Bynum. But according to, you know, to what's in our packet, with the 4896, it appears that there's ten hours of overtime for every every work period for every fireman that works that schedule. But then I, so I'm confused about that. Well, first let's, yeah, if you would run that by me first, and then I'll go with my next question.
Okay. So the Fair Labor Standards Act has what they call, it's commonly referred to as a 7K exemption. It's 207K of the Fair Labor Standards Act that says that for police officers and firefighters, you can do other than a standard seven-day work period. So it dictates in the law exactly how many days and then how many hours it is before you get to overtime. So for a twenty-four-day work period, they work a hundred and ninety-two hours, but the law says that after a hundred and eighty-two hours, they have to be paid overtime for that ten hours. Now, if they work their entire work period without taking any time off, then they, yes, they would get the extra ten hours as overtime. It's paid typically as straight time since it's a twenty-four-day work period, and then they get paid the halftime on the last twelve days.
Okay, but if they take vacation, or they call off sick, or whatever, that's not included in that?
No, it's not. For the city, the only hours that count towards hours worked are jury duty hours, and that's it.
Right.
The holidays don't count towards hours worked, and neither does sick or vacation or personal leave.
Okay, so if they come to work every day for that time period, they get ten hours overtime?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And I also understand that the old schedule, the twenty-four, forty-eight, they also received ten hours of overtime on that schedule.
They
Didn't really change.
They actually received... It wasn't ten hours, I don't think. I think it was six hours automatically built in to the fifteen-day work period. But with the fifteen-day work period, it was easier for them to get actual overtime above and beyond their hours. Now they have to work the entire twenty-four hours to get above and beyond that ten hours of FLSA overtime. So we segregated out the FLSA is just required mandated by law, and then any extra overtime is hours they work above and beyond the hundred and ninety-two hours that they're scheduled to work.
Okay, for the firemen, I understand, you know, they like the 4896 schedule, and of course, I would like the overtime. But for the city, you know, the taxpayers, seems like the other one would be better, you know, for the actual, for budgeting purposes, I guess. And then I know there's pros and cons about people calling off more. You know, can you give us just a little bit of
Sure.
the pros and cons for this? Because I understand both sides. And I understand that you're just wanting to put this in writing, you know, also. And that's the purpose. So, but I think for, you know, for my understanding and for our citizens' understanding, if you could explain just a little bit more, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, all right. So the firefighters, prior to 2016, the firefighters would come to work at 7:00 AM, and they would work until 7:00 AM the next day. Then they would be off for two days, and then they would return to work. They worked a fifteen-day work period, which means that they got paid after fifteen days. So there were twenty-seven, twenty-five work periods in the year. So they could schedule their time so that they missed the work period. They would never take vacation time and straddle two different work periods because that would impact their overtime. Okay? So in fact, when we were doing the fifteen-day work period, the overtime was probably higher than it is now because now they have to work the entire twenty-four-hour, twenty-four-day period to get extra overtime. And so that's, you know, that's one pro to the city of them being on a twenty-four-day work period is that it lessens the amount of overtime. From the firefighter's standpoint, they really enjoy the fact that they're coming to work, and they're missing the traffic a couple of times, and then they are here for forty-eight consecutive hours. I think one of the reasons that they wanted to try this was because it allowed them to get more involved in the projects and the things that they were working on in a forty-eight-hour period rather than a twenty-four-hour period because in the twenty-four-hour period, you could have a lot of interruptions. But with the forty-eight-hour period, you could, you know, you could see more of a project through. Yes, there is that four-day gap of them being off duty, but it, you know, it helped the firefighters in terms of having to not drive as much or as often to work. It provided them more time with their family. One of the big proponents and reasons that they wanted to do it was because they felt like that there were a lot of employees that were having issues with sleep and the ability to sleep, and having those four nights where you could sleep in your own bed, and consecutively, it gave you the opportunity to become more rested. And so that was one of the other proponents and reasons that they wanted to move to that shift.
Okay. So that's, see, that was one of my issues three years ago, was not enough sleep and accidents and things like that. But you have shown me that there's really no more workers' comp incidents or anything like that because of the work schedule, and that's still correct, right?
Yes, that is correct.
All right. I'm still not a big proponent of it, but I understand, I understand where you're coming from on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, none. Are there any other questions or comments from the council for Ms. Beckett regarding this? Seeing none? Excellent presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
So this, are there any other questions or comments from the council regarding this? Okay, seeing this, this is, we're now in line for a motion. Councilmember Brown?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve Resolution Romeo dash two zero one four dash zero two five dash zero two. Did I get it right?
Let me look here. Give me just a second.
Do I have to put the whole title? Consideration or action regarding approval, Brown? Revert. Revisions to the hours worked, compensation, and rates of pay, overtime, compensation, and competency time and pay system.
Oh, there it is, okay. Yeah, it just wasn't in the header. Okay, so we have a motion for approval. Is there a second? Councilmember Thompson?
Yes, Mayor, that is for a second.
Thank you, ma'am. So we have a motion for approval and a second. Are there any other questions or comments? You see the resolution? Okay, if you would, please signify your votes. Motion passes unanimous. And I meant to fail to mention earlier, Councilmember Weest is not with us tonight. He is away. So again, motion passes unanimous, six to zero. So moving on to agenda item number eight, being ordinance number O dash two oh one eight dash oh three three dash one five. Ms. Baxter, welcome.
Evening, Mayor.
Evening, Mayor and Council. This is to conduct a public hearing and consider an application on behalf of U-Haul for a zoning change request from C two commercial to P D C two self-storage facility district locally known as fifty-one oh one Northeast Loop Eight Twenty. The applicant is applying for a P D C two self-storage district. U-Haul's property immediately east of this location already has a P D C two self-storage district designation. The applicant is wanting to extend the same condition to this property so they can mimic the existing business. This would allow them to develop in a uniform way. On November twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended to approve ordinance by a vote of five zero. If we look at the screen up here, this is where they're currently located, fifty-two oh one and fifty-two oh five Denton Highway. This is the property that they're purchasing from Zimmer Cabota. This is the elevations of the proposed development. More elevation details, and this is if you're going westbound on the frontage road from Denton Highway. This approach is already existing, which was approved through N T E on the Eight Twenty Project. If you notice on the property, there are a couple of billboard signs, one on each side of the property, which is kind of a detriment to the property, as well as there's a retainer wall along the frontage road also. Site plan here, this is phase two, or lot two of the other developments, so they're just expanding it again to the west. Fifty-two oh one, fifty-two oh five, and this is fifty-one oh one, and it backs up to the railroad track, and then of course you have the creek there on the north side. Facing towards the northeast, this is actually from the street view. If you have any questions, I'm available, and the applicant is also here.
Thank you, Ms. Bachelor. Are there any questions? Dr. Trong.
Ms. Bachelor, I think this is an excellent idea to expand the U-Haul here because the lot next to the railroad track-
Mm-hmm.
-I bet you no retail store would want to open there, but in the past, U-Haul, I went by that location many times, they done pretty good job, keep everything clean. And now expansion, I have no problem with that. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Trong. Are there any other questions or comments from the council for Ms. Bachelor or the applicant? Seeing none? Excellent presentation. Thank you. This is posted as a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing at seven thirty-one for any, anyone in the audience wishing to speak regarding this agenda item. Again, this is agenda item number eight. Okay, seeing none. I'll close the public hearing at seven thirty-two, and is there any questions or comments from the council regarding this? None? Okay, we are in line for a motion. Councilmember Thompson.
Yes, I would like to move on that we accept ordinance number O, O dash two eighteen dash zero three three dash one five, better known as Z dash zero zero seven dash eighteen. First reading.
Thank you, ma'am. And, Dr. Trong.
Mayor, council, I'm second.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion for approval and a second on the first reading. If you would please signify your votes. Motion passes unanimous. Thank you, council. Moving right along to agenda item number nine, which is ordinance number, oh, no, ordinance number O dash two oh one eight dash O three four dash one five. Again, Ms. Bachelor.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is to conduct a public hearing and consideration on application of Ryan Reddiss for a conditional use permit request in the C two commercial district to allow for a car wash locally known as fifty-four ten North Beach Street. The applicant is requesting to be allowed to construct a car wash. The previous building on this parcel was a self-service car wash built in two thousand and three demolished in two thousand and fourteen. The proposed new car wash would be an express car wash with an auto wash tunnel for vehicles to be conveyed through with self-service vacuums that would come with the purchase of a car wash. On November twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended to approve the ordinance by a vote of five zero. If we look at the screen up here, this is a quick trip at Fossil Vista and Beach Street, and this is the parcel, again, it had a self-service car wash for about ten years. This is their survey, and one of the hindrances of developing this property, if you'll notice this dotted line here, it's a ninety-foot visibility easement that was put in place by Q T when they plotted the property. This is the site plan. In the ordinance, one of the exhibits just shows exhibit of the site plan. Until we get the corrected one that doesn't have an encroachment into that visibility easement, we will put that in there on the second reading to, for the ordinance. This is an overall site plan showing the double lanes for the pay station going through the tunnel, and these are the vacuums. Another elevation detail. Exterior elevations, and this was the old car wash that, like I said, was demolished in twenty thirteen, uh, twenty fourteen. This is a shared mutual access that will provide going to the car wash property and Q T, and there is a crossover here on Beach Street since they reconfigured all that. That's the crossover. If you have any questions, I'm available, and the applicant is also here.
Thank you, Ms. Bachelor. Are there any questions or comments from the council for Ms. Bachelor or, or the applicant? Seeing none? Okay, excellent presentation. Thank you. This too is a public hearing, so I'll open up the public hearing at seven thirty-five for anyone in the audience wishing to speak regarding this agenda item. Again, this is agenda item number nine. Okay, seeing none, I'll now close the public hearing, and we are in line for a motion. Councilmember, none.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number O dash two zero one eight dash zero three four dash one five, C dash zero one three dash one eight, first reading.
Thank you, ma'am. Motion for approval on the first reading. Councilmember Brown.
And that's for a second, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. A motion for approval and a second. If you would please signify your votes. Motion passes unanimous. Thank you, council, and thank you, Ms. Bachelor. Moving right along to agenda item number ten, is there any staff reports? None? Okay. Nothing for the future agenda items, boards and commissions? I didn't see any resignations, so appointments or reappointments? Yes, ma'am?
I do have a resignation.
Oh, you do? I didn't see that.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I got an email, and I think it went to Keith Lane. I'm not sure it went to Art, but Cody Gamble, who is on our Parks and Rec, has resigned. He's moved out of the city.
Okay, so if you would please ratify the resignation of Cody Gamble for a park, from our Parking Rec Department. Thank you. Moving right along to appointments or in or reappointments? Seeing none? Attendance requirements, again, councilmember Weist is out. Does anyone want to make a motion to excuse his absence? Councilmember Thompson.
I'm going to excuse Weist tonight from the meeting.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. A motion to excuse. Councilmember Groh?
Second.
Thank you, sir. If you would please signify your votes. Motion passes unanimous, and with that, that is the conclusion of our council meeting. The time now is seven thirty-eight. We are adjourned. Happy New Year. Happy New Year to everyone.